Good evening. The Rio Rancho Public Schools Board of Education meeting for Monday, June 23rd, 2025, is now called to order. All will please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
J.C., can you take a roll call for us?
President Galbert.
Present.
Vice President Morgan.
Present.
Secretary Tyler.
Board Member Tripp.
Present.
Board Member Miller.
Present. All right, thank you so much. We'd like to excuse Board Secretary Jessica Tyler tonight. She's not able to be here, but thanks for everyone coming. It's been nice and hot, and I hear there might be rain tomorrow, so we're all hopeful for that. But thank you, everyone, for coming to our meeting tonight. We'll start with some introductory comments by our Superintendent of School, Dr. Vissu Cleveland.
Thank you very much. Again, welcome, everyone. We're glad you're here this evening. The Rio Rancho Public Schools Audit Committee met prior to the regular board meeting. This is the beginning of a new audit cycle for the district, and so talked a little bit about just the structure, the organization of the audit, and that will be underway soon. As I said, it does start the official process for the audit for the district. We will be using the same firm that we used last year, Beasley Mitchell &amp; Company. They're a company from Los Cruces, New Mexico, and we look forward to working with them again this year. The chairperson for the Audit Committee is Dr. Beth Miller. Other committee members include Gary Tripp, who is the Audit Committee Vice Chair. I serve on the committee. Seth Muller is our parent representative, and David Vehill is our Executive Director of Finance, serves on the committee. And then we have to have one individual who has business background in the area of finance, and that individual is Kelly Weinright. This evening, we have commendations, New Mexico School Boards Association Student Achievement Award. The Board of Education will honor Carl Lepelmann, who was our retired Chief Academic Officer. We're presenting him with the New Mexico School Boards Association Student Achievement Award. This award is given to a few individuals who have made a significant difference in student achievement in the district over time. Carl will be introduced this evening by Lauren Hatch, and the presentation will be made by Amanda Galbert, President of the Board. I would have just a few things, maybe an opportunity to share some more, but Carl Lepelmann was one of the original members of Rio Rancho Public Schools when it was created in 1994. At that time, he was the principal of Enchanted Hills Elementary, but he certainly had been with us from the very beginning, played a very key role in the formation of the district and in its development over time. We have this evening, Bond Election Option Overview. Eric Harrigan with RBC Capital Markets will be presenting information to the Board related to the upcoming bond sale this fall. This bond sale will enable the Board to continue meeting many of its established priorities. Many of those have been very difficult to attain due to a variety of factors, things like increased construction costs that in many cases have doubled or even tripled, labor, equipment, material costs, and been a very challenging environment for school construction the last few years. But we're excited to continue with the priorities that the Board has established for the district. We also have our legal, our bond counsel here this evening, Roger Spurling. There will be a resolution and proclamation. The Board will be asked to consider approval of a general obligation bond election resolution for this year and proclamation calling for a district election. The information regarding this Board action will be presented by Lauren Hatch, our Chief Counsel, Eric Harrigan, RBC Capital Markets, and our Financial Advisor, and Chris Muirhead with Roger Spurling, his Bond Counsel. We have a request for the Board this evening to consider renaming our social communications program for the district. This request will be presented to the Board by Jerry Reader, who is our Executive Director of Special Services for the district. Tamara Wheeler was a long-serving Director of Special Services, and she played a key role in the development of the social communications programs for the district. Tamara was a very special educator. She has been terribly missed in Rio Rancho Public Schools, and this is a posthumous recognition. We have this evening proposed action for the Board on the negotiated agreement. I see that our Union President is here this evening, and so very welcome and glad that you are here as well. The Board is asked to consider approval of a ratified negotiated Union Agreement. That means it has gone to the membership of the Union, and they have voted to affirm and to confirm the contract. The presentation will be made by Mike Chavez, who is our Executive Director of HR, and he will discuss with the Board some of the proposed changes and explain the process for reaching the agreement. The agreement presented to the Board has been ratified by the membership of the Rio Rancho School Employees Union. We want to thank the members of both negotiating teams. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of hard work, and it's really, it's just really very helpful for everyone if you can have an agreement prior to the actual start of the school year. And so very pleased to bring a proposed agreement to you this evening. The Board of Education will also be asked to consider the award of RFP number 2025-21. It is a General Contractor On Demand RFP. This information will be presented by Michael Madrid, who is our Director of Purchasing, and of course is our Chief Procurement Officer for our RPS. The recommendation is to issue a multi-award to 19 contractors, and they will provide more information to you regarding those various vendors. We also have a real estate transaction that's been in the works for quite some time, actually several years. The Board is asked to consider approval of a transaction for Vista Grande Elementary property. The Board is also asked to delegate to the administration a permission to be able to close the deal if you agree with what's being proposed this evening. This presentation will be provided by Patrick Martinez, our Executive Director of Facilities, and Lauren Hatch, our Chief Legal Counsel for the district. And that's what's on our agenda. Are there any comments, questions, concerns? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. And we'll now go to approve the prioritized agenda and proposed time allocations.
Well, remember Jeff Morgan will make a motion to approve the prioritized agenda and proposed time allocations.
Gary Tripp, second.
Okay. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You guys are gonna have to step it up without Jessica here.
Yeah, I know. I saw that the 19 companies he was gonna use up there, and that's gonna be interesting, huh?
We're gonna make it through.
Yeah, 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 there you go. Yeah.
All right, well, now move into our commendations, and this is a pretty sweet commendation and that I'm really excited about. And so Lauren Hatch is gonna introduce our NMSBA Student Achievement Award for Carl Lepelmann.
Madam President, members of the School Board, Dr. Cleveland, and representatives of the Rio Rancho community that are with us today and online. It is my great honor to introduce Carl Lepelmann, a deeply respected educator and leader who has devoted nearly four decades to serving students and families and educators across New Mexico. Mr. Lepelmann served for many years as the Chief Academic Officer, and that's where most of us know him from. He provided visionary leadership over all aspects of the curriculum and instruction for the district. In this role, he guided teachers and staff professional development, managed instructional budgets, and championed the advancement of high-quality teaching and learning district-wide. He also oversaw the Departments of Special Education, Federal and Bylegal Programs, and School Improvement, ensuring that every student had access and the support and resources that they needed. Carl earned his Bachelor's Degree in Science, Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, a Master's of Arts in Special Education, and an Education Specialist Degree from the University of New Mexico. And over the course of his remarkable 38-year career, he served as an Assistant Principal at Rio Rancho Elementary School, when it was still part of APS, actually, as Principal of Enchanted Hills Elementary under both the Hamas Valley District and also Rio Rancho Public Schools. And later, he served as an Executive Director, an Associate Superintendent, and a mentor to countless educators and non-educators like me. He was very generous with his time. In the final years of his tenure, I had the distinct privilege of sharing a hallway with Carl, and with it, I benefited from his wit, his wisdom, and his unwavering belief in the power of education to transform people's lives. Carl's impact on this district is profound. He was one of the original principals that helped launch Rio Rancho Public Schools 30 years ago, and he remains a key figure in the development of Rio Tech High School, which is opening this fall. Please join me in celebrating Carl Lepelmann's extraordinary contributions to public education and his well-deserved recognition tonight by the Rio Rancho School Board and also the New Mexico School Boards Association. I give you Carl Lepelmann.
Thank you. Many of you know me, I'm a man of few words, so I'll keep it short tonight. So I won't go through my 45 years of education. I think the main thing I want to say is that it's wonderful to be here tonight, to see you and see some faces, faces I've worked with. And I say "work with" because all leaders work with great people. I think of Rio Rancho Public Schools, I think of people who care. They're committed and pretty important, competent. And I think that, you know, just our district is so remarkable because the people work in it. It's just remarkable. And I want to thank Dr. Cleveland for, she saw something in me when I was principal of a school, elementary school. Actually, I had been a K-9 through 9 school. I called it a K-9 school when it was in Hamas, but it was K through 9 school, and then we became a district. And I think of the many, many people that I was blessed to work with, and so it really truly has been. I think of Gary Tripp, I think I remember being a colleague of his and going over there and looking at Rio Rancho High School and saying, hey, this is a great place for students. And he made it a great place. He has a tradition for that. Then going on to actually supervise him as a principal for a little while. And so I have really fond memories. I can't believe it's been a year now, it'll be a year since I retired. It feels like three, and it wouldn't feel that way if I hadn't not had a few health issues. But, so I want to just say thank you for this honor. It is a true honor. And continue the fight, keep working. I know it is. It's not easy. Challenges are day-to-day. I mean, we face challenges every day, we all have, and we'll continue to. One thing about this district, we are partners, Dr. Cleveland, and we take challenges and we overcome them. I was talking to Patrick just earlier, and he goes, I said, how's that technical center going? I said, it's at 98%. It's almost there, it's almost on. And that's been a huge challenge, but did we give up? No. So I want to thank you and thank all of you I've worked with over the years and all the leaders that I've been a mentor and turn into other leaders and develop other leaders from that. So thank you.
Thank you. Now, don't sit down yet. Yeah, I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna bring this up to you in just a second, but, yeah, hold on a second. But I just want to give her just some opportunities. I'm sure Dr. Cleveland wants to say something. I'm sure Gary would like to say a couple of words. But, you know, what I know of Carl, and I think it's, is that Carl always cares what you're saying. I don't know, for me, as I became a member of the Board, he'd ask me, like, how's your running here? How's this going? And he actually would sit and listen and was, you know, curious about my life and who I am. And I just, I see that in you, in your interactions with people, all the people that I've been around you, who you've talked to. And that means a lot to people when they know that you're actually interested in people's lives and care to know. And so thank you so much for being that person in our community and for just always being curious and wanting to know about people and trying to make Rio Rancho a better place. And you've done such a great job with that. And I can't believe it's been a year, honestly. It just, it seems crazy that it's been that long, but thank you for all that you do. Gary, did you want to add any words?
I do. You know, I do want to share a couple of things with what I learned as Carl being one of my mentors. You know, when I was the principal of Rio Rancho High School, it was Carl Lepelmann that started the pre-SAT test, and we were gonna give every sophomore and those parents an opportunity to understand where they're at and where they need to grow to be successful at the higher level. And I always keep that thought in my head, but I always remember Carl saying, you know, the best teacher needs to be in the first grade classroom. The very best teacher you have, and the second-best teacher needs to be in the second-grade classroom. And it just kept going on and on and on and on, and that child needed to get the very best, the very best that we had to offer at the very beginning of their educational career. And that has always stuck with me for the 30 years or so that I know Carl, that he cares about, like you're saying, he cares about every single child in the district, you know, everybody. And Carl, it's greatly appreciated. I was thinking of all the people that I talked to recently about you, and I was mentioning Dave Latham a little bit earlier, but I think a lot of people just want to say congratulations and thank you for a great career, and thank you for that career being about our kids here.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, please, Carl. Thank you and congratulations. I want to echo what Amanda said, because the very first time I met you, that's the impression I got that you cared about me. So I want to say thank you so much, and again, congratulations and good luck to you. Thanks.
Beth, go ahead, Beth.
I want to add my congratulations and appreciation to you. I think I first remember you was when you came to a meeting. I've talked about this before, and for bond, that was coming up, and you explained, I didn't know a lot about the district at that point, and you did a good job of explaining why these funds were needed, what the school district needed to do to help our children grow, and I appreciated that. And then when you were up on the campus here in Rio Rancho, it was good to work with you and CNN in terms of looking for opportunities for students to move through the system. And I appreciate that, this assistant approach, and I appreciate working with you very much, Carl. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
I mentioned it earlier, but I'd like to mention again, Carl was with us at the very start of the district, and I can tell you, it was a very different world back then of what we didn't have and, thank you, what we didn't have, and the challenges that we faced in year one were just sometimes pretty overwhelming. And yet, we had a core team, principals and district staff, that's worked really closely together to get this district going. And Carl played such a key role in that. I cannot think of anyone over all of the 31 years of the school district that's had a more profound impact on our district than Carl had. And he was really challenged, first as a principal of the district office, to be sure that the teaching and learning in our buildings were high-quality. And all the time and effort and work that went into making that a reality, I don't think most people have any idea what was involved with that, but he just, you know, threw himself into it for years. And so the success that we've had academically, Carl just played a really key role in that. You know, sometimes we think of facilities as being over here in operations, but I want you to know that, you know, operations have a very important job of ensuring those buildings got built. Carl had the important job of helping ensure that what was going on inside those buildings was quality, and that we were building buildings that supported the teaching and learning, was a good learning environment for students, and a good place to work for staff. And so he played a really key role in that. I was thinking, Carl, I might have missed one, but I think there were 13 buildings that you had an impact on as we worked over the 31 years. And so what went on is just as important as the building itself, and he was part of both of those. Oversaw the curriculum instruction budget. Same thing with staffing, worked very closely with Mike Baker and their earlier counterparts to be sure that we staffed as well as we could, given the resources that we had. And I want to echo what was just said. You know, I never once in all the 31 years ever heard Carl say anything that wasn't geared to, so the best interest of students, what will make a difference in the lives of our students. And he never varied from that, and that was always what drove every decision that he made. So I want to congratulate him. He certainly has made a profound impact on student achievement in this district, and it's wonderful that the Board has chosen to recognize him this evening.
Yeah, yeah. Beth, you want to squeeze?
Sure. Come over this way.
Oh, he's coming, okay.
Okay. Let's put him right next to Amanda.
All right.
Now that you're up here, no.
Are we gonna get in a little bit closer together?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay.
We're good.
Yeah, no, this is great. It's good.
One, two, three. One, two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy for you.
Okay. Great. We'll now go into our reports. So we just have one report tonight. It's our Bond Election Option Overview, and we have Eric Harrigan from RBC Capital here to present.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Commissioner, Board Superintendent, Eric Harrigan with RBC Capital Markets. So later on in your agenda, you'll be considering whether or not to send a question to voters for authoring additional issuance of bonds to continue to maintain the district that serves tax rate. But my presentation is really to kind of talk about, you know, sort of, you know, the assumptions that we're using, sort of where we got here, and also some recent changes to New Mexico law that we've taken into account and factoring into what your capacity is. So on the first page of the presentation, on page one, we have a history of your assessed valuation. So two years ago, the district sent a question to voters, which they approved, authorizing the issuance of $80 million. We, at the time, were estimating your growth rate to be about 4% based upon what the district had, you know, seen historically in its tax base. But over the last few years, you've seen very, very strong growth. You've seen three years of double-digit growth, and then most recently, this past year, you saw growth of nearly 22% or over 22%. And a large part of that really was in your non-residential component, which a portion of intel came back onto the tax rolls because an industrial reference bond had been paid off. So over the last five years, you've seen growth of over 11%. And so based upon that, you know, the district has the ability to go back to voters, continue to maintain the existing tax rate that the district has had in place for a long time, and then continue to be able to make critical infrastructure improvements for the district. On page two of the presentation, though, I did want to make the Board aware that there were two fairly significant constitutional amendments that were approved by voters in New Mexico that relate to exemptions for veterans. The first constitutional amendment, which will have probably, we estimate, the largest impact to your tax base, is that it expanded the exemptions that disabled veterans get. So prior to that, only 100% disabled veterans got an exemption that was tied to their percent disability. That's now been granted to all disabled veterans, so any disabled veteran owning a property gets to exempt that percentage of their disability. And then the other constitutional amendment is that it increased the standard exemption for a veteran from $4,000 to $10,000. It's very, very difficult to really calculate what the true impact of this is because the data just isn't there, but what we have done is we've attempted to try to estimate what that impact is based upon the information that we do have. And so on page three, I know there's a lot of numbers, and I'm just gonna focus on sort of the bottom. We anticipate that the impact will be somewhere in the range of about $253 million to your tax base, which is around 6%. And so we do take this in, we will, we have taken this into account the best that we can, of course, until veterans actually apply for those exemptions, we really won't truly know the full impact. The standard exemption will become effective this upcoming tax year, and the veteran exemption will become effective in the 2026 tax year, which will be next year.
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry. I just said, does this exemption relate only to the veteran or to surviving spouses as well?
That's a great question. So it's to both surviving spouses, widow-widowers, and disabled veterans, and it's tied to the percent of the home that they own. If they own, you know, only 50% of the property, they would only be, that exemption would be only eligible for that portion that they own, or if they own or own 100% of that property, then that exemption would take place. But yes, it does apply to surviving spouses as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Which, again, just makes it that much more difficult.
Yeah.
We do have your, all of the various property tax levies that the district has. We've been through this before. You have an operating mill levy, you have a two-mill levy, and then you have your debt service. And again, as we talk about the capacity for this upcoming election, it'll continue to maintain that $8.54 tax rate that the district has had in place. The other benefit for the district, you pay off your debt very, very quickly on page five of the presentation. This really also helps, you know, with the, with the, being able to issue additional bonds without impacting the district's existing tax rate. So on page six, in terms of the assumptions that we have made, so we are assuming about two, a little over 2% growth in your tax base next year as these standard veteran exemptions come on place. We're projecting a decrease in your tax base in 2027, taking into account the disabled veteran. And then for purpose, because we wanted to be conservative, we did assume that that intel property goes back off the tax rolls because if they issue another IRB, that goes off the tax rolls. So we wanted to be conservative on our estimates. Again, depending upon the actual impact, it could, you know, change our recommendation in four years. So what we're, what we are recommending to the district is to go back to voters this November for an additional $80 million, so it would be a total of $160 million that would be going to voters over the next, over the two-year period. Again, that continues to maintain that $8.54 rate. The next election would be projected in November of 2029, so four years from now, in the amount of $120 million, again, just to continue to maintain the rate that the district has. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Cleveland, do you want to add anything right now before we go to the Board? You're good? Okay. All right. You're good, Gary? Do you have anything?
Thank you.
I think we're good. This was a great report, by the way. I spent some time with it earlier today, and so I appreciate kind of understanding all of those details and as it comes up. So from what I understand, though, is if it could hurt us if we didn't go for a bond, really, at this time, right, because of the change that's coming up? Is that, am I kind of understanding that right? I don't know if I'm phrasing that right. If we weren't to go for a bond here in the next, which we're gonna be voting on, it could be difficult for us to possibly, depending on these, all these numbers and how they're changing with these, with these new laws. Is that correct?
So, yeah, the challenge would really be maintaining your tax rate. And as we all know, the cost of construction has gone up significantly, and, you know, just being able to, being able to add the additional $80 million without impacting your tax rate will help to, you know, go to fund some of those, some of those projects. So from the challenges, yeah, it would be a challenge to So from the challenge is, yeah, it would be a challenge to continue to maintain your tax rate.
Okay. Well, thank you. Go ahead.
I would just, you know, add one thing, and I said it earlier. Because of the increased prices for construction, it's been very hard to complete the priorities the board already has in place. And so trying to meet those priorities and, you know, make those obligations pay off in the community, we almost have to do this. And I think maybe there'll be some questions, why aren't we doing a lot of new things beyond what we're doing now? Because we're needing to finish the projects we've already started or the commitments that we've already made to the community. Some cases, they are not things that we've already started, like independence, but we made that commitment as a district several years ago. So this is really critical, I think, in terms of meeting those priorities that were established by the Real Rancho Board and completing them in a timely manner. So it is important. Cost of construction is kind of frightening right now. Hopefully, maybe it will come down at some point. But in some cases, it's doubled. In some cases, we've even seen triple what it was. And that's pretty sobering. We haven't had anything, I don't think, like that since the, maybe, 1980s, where interest rates were going up and the cost of construction. So we've had a long, good period, but right now, it is a very challenging environment for construction. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Anything else? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you back up, I believe. And so now, we don't have any public comment, right? Craig, Jesse, no one's signed up for this? Okay, so we have no public comment in person or on our online forum. But for those who might be listening on our, through YouTube, you are welcome to come in and sign up for public comment. You just need to do it before our meeting starts, and you can have three minutes to kind of talk to the board. And next is our consent agenda. You can go to approve.
Board member Jeff Morgan, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Remember Miller, second motion? Okay, we have a motion by Jeff Morgan and a second by Beth Miller, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a report out. And the board met in a closed executive session on Monday, June 16th, 2025, to discuss the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the public body, specifically for the superintendent to inform the board about potential property transactions. Yeah, did someone tell me? I just heard you guys on the thing, sorry. I lost my place. I know, you're good. As permitted under section 10-15-1H8 of the Mexico Open Meetings Act, the discussion was limited to the topics identified in the separately noticed meeting. I'm sorry, sometimes I think I hear my name and I think, oh, what did I forget?
We were looking for Mr. Baker, that's all. We noticed he wasn't here tonight.
Oh, yeah. And so next, we'll go into our business portion of our meeting for today. And our first item is to consider the approval of the resolution and proclamation calling for a district election. So we have three presenters, Lauren Hatch, our chief counsel, Eric Harrigan, RBC Capital, and Chris Muirhead from Modro Spurley.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Cleveland. I have the easy job. I'm just going to introduce this topic. And actually, Eric kind of already did, giving the overview of what the financial situation is with the bonding program. Tonight, we have a resolution to consider, the board has a resolution to consider, that it would put a question on the November regular, the general, local general election ballot, and also would have three board positions as well on the election. One, District One, District Three, and District Five. I'm going to turn the time over to Chris Muirhead, our bond counsel from Modro Spurley. And Eric is here as well to answer some questions if anything comes up. So I will turn the time over to him.
Good evening, Madam President, board members. Dr. Cleveland, Chris Muirhead with Mokka Firm. You've really been introduced to all of this. So what this resolution in front of you is, is the official action that you would need to take to put a question on the ballot for November 4th in the upcoming election to authorize, seek voter approval for $80 million in general obligation bonds that could be issued in numerous series over a four-year period. The question is drafted as broadly as permitted under the statute so that the board has maximum flexibility, as Dr. Cleveland mentioned, to existing projects, future projects, where it needs to go, or capital improvements. As Eric went through describing the mill levy, assessments, property values, this would not, it's not intended, unanticipated to raise your property rates. It does also, as Mr. Hatch said, put three board positions on the ballot. I think the county clerks already been notified of that, but this would be official action of the board. The Santa Barbara County Clerk handles everything with the election. So once you take this action, they handle all the publications, all the election requirements and the like. Happy to answer any questions about it. The $80 million, if it's approved, then would come back to you, or as you've seen of lesser numerous series over the four-year period, for your approval tied to specific projects. You would still have the vote and the voice about how that money is spent. So happy to answer any questions, as is, I know Eric as well.
Okay. Do you want to add anything, Dr. Cleveland?
I'm good.
Okay, any questions from the board? Do we have any questions from the board on anything? Okay. If we don't have any questions, we can go for a motion. Thank you. Appreciate you coming out.
Board member Jeff Morgan, I make a motion for the approval of the resolution and proclamation calling for a district election.
Gary Tripp, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jeff Morgan, a second by Gary Tripp. And Jesse, will you take a roll call vote first, please?
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Board member Tripp?
Yes.
Board member Miller?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you all coming out tonight. And we, and I just have to sign that documentation, right? We don't need anyone else to sign that one. Okay. All right. And next, we will consider the approval of renaming the district's social communications program to the Wheeler Social Communications Program. And we have Jerry Reader, our executive director, special services presenting.
President Galbraith, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. I would like to submit a proposal to the board to rename the district's social communication program to the Wheeler Social Communication Programs. I just, the name change will be in honor of Tamara Wheeler, who I first met when I took a group of administrators to the Phoenix area, to the Deer Valley Unified School District after I had met their special ed director at the time. And it turned out that Tamara Wheeler was my guide. And after a career there, she retired and moved back to New Mexico, where she had grown up and gone to high school. And she came in, she just wanted to be an SLP half-time for child find. And six months in, one of my directors resigned and recruited her to apply, and she successfully got the position of director. But when I notified her family to say, hey, we are interested in doing this, they said, well, what is it that you're renaming? So I just wanted to read that to you. Tamara developed what was first an autism program at the elementary level for students with significant communication and social emotional needs. The program later developed into a social communication program for students of varying disability. She helped to develop this program to support our students' unique needs by providing additional support from speech, language, pathologists, and social workers to support the development of social, emotional, and communication skills. The program has been a great success for many of our students. She was able to develop relationships with parents and school staff to ensure that students' needs were met. So we have four programs, one at CLO Zool, one at Maggie Cordova Elementary School, one at Real Rancho Middle School, and one at Real Rancho High School. That, like the...
Thank you. Thanks for presenting that. You know, it's interesting, because as we were talking about this war, I was thinking about Carl was in here, and just what a close-knit, you know, community Real Rancho Public Schools is. And it's just, it's, it's a very sweet thing. Dr. Cleveland, would you like to add something?
I think Jerry said, well, she just had, she was leader in so many ways in our district, in our special services department. And this was a real passion for her. And trying to have this program to really be shaped in a way that would support some of our highest-end children, some of our most vulnerable children in the district. And she gave just so much time and effort to it. So really kind of sad situation for all of us, because she retired and then became ill just almost immediately after that. And, but, but we certainly remember her, and we certainly appreciate all that she contributed to our district. I didn't even have a chance to talk to Jerry just right before the meeting, but I had several calls today asking that we put her first name in, as well as her second name. And that certainly would be up to the board and up to, I don't, you know. But we did have that request from some of the staff members today. But I cannot, I enthusiastically support this, the naming of this particular program because it acknowledges the hard work and effort, and the vision in particular, that she had for, as I said, meeting the needs of some of our most challenged children in the school district.
Jerry, if we were to add her first name into that name, would that cause any?
No, I don't think it would cause any problems. I think what they were trying to do is just have something that easily rolled off the tongue.
Oh, yeah.
But I'd be happy and be very honored.
It's strictly up to you, and I just wanted to pass on, I promised I would pass on that request.
So when I make the motion, Lauren, is it okay for me to change that? Okay.
Just to the board really quick, what do you feel about that? It is not going to roll off the tongue as easily, but perhaps.
I'm gonna make the motion that way, so as long as you guys are okay with it. Is that all right, Gary?
I like the tongue.
You like it?
I'll go with it.
You like the easy, the just Wheeler?
I like easy. I like the kiss, K-I-S-S.
But let me share the concern that one person raised. The only reason, they were afraid it would look like it's a commercial name, rather than recognizing that it's an individual person's name. And that was the concern, that they would think that Wheeler might be a program name or something that doesn't represent her. So that was, that was kind of the rationale that was given to me.
That makes sense. And Gary was okay with that as well, so.
Well, I like that rolls off the tongue too, Gary, so I don't know.
I'll go for a motion.
So it's whatever you all want to do.
I think, I think even if we put Tamara, I think they could still, you know, in writing, it would always say, it's Tamara, right? I'm actually, but, you know, that they could still refer to it as the Wheeler Social Communications Program, but in writing, it would have her name on there.
Yeah, I really care.
Yeah, so.
Board member Jeff Morgan, I make a motion for the approval of remaining the district's social communication program to the Tamara Wheeler Social Communications Program.
Remember Miller, second motion? Okay, we have a motion by Jeff Morgan and a second by Beth Miller. And Jesse, you want to just take a roll call vote first?
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Board member Tripp?
Yes.
Board member Miller?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And for our next item, we will go to...
Jerry, thank you for bringing that forward.
Yeah, thanks, Jerry. And thanks for helping us to get to know her a little bit better, too. And so next, we'll consider the approval of the ratified negotiation union agreement. Mike Chavez, our executive director of human resources, and we also have Billy Healan here, will present. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. I am here with Billy Healan, the member, the president, sorry, of the Real Rancho School Employees Union. And we have, for your consideration, a fully ratified 25-26 negotiated agreement. I do want to make the members of the union for a very professional process. This went very smoothly this year, and doesn't mean that we agreed on everything, but we're not necessarily supposed to. However, I think we came up with a very jointly agreeable agreement. And it will be in the best interest of everything in here for both the district and the employees of the district. I had sent this earlier, however, I am more than happy to go through the individual changes, if that's what the board would like. Or I can simply stand for questions if there are questions on any of the changes.
Yeah, I know I had the opportunity to read it. Does anyone mind to go through the specific changes?
I was just wondering about just a highlight version, not the specific. I mean, from both Mike and Gary's perspective, just a, just a highlight.
There were just a number of changes. And if you want to talk about a couple of the ones that you all presented.
If I can get my tablet to go. Good evening. Madam President Galbraith, Vice President Morgan, board members Miller, and unfortunately, Madam Tripp is not here. I mean, I'm sorry, Tyler, Superintendent Dr. Cleveland. It is always an honor to come and talk with you, and I'm really happy to address you today. The union is delighted, once again, with the successful negotiations between the district and the union, which resulted in a suite of positive advancements that will significantly benefit our dedicated staff. This collaborative effort underscores an unwavering collective commitment to fostering an exceptional work environment. Moreover, the successful negotiations between the district and the union provide compelling proof of the power of collaboration. We are pleased with the 4% increase over the current base salary for all bargaining unit employees, as was passed by the legislature earlier this year. This substantial investment reflects an appreciation for the invaluable contributions our staff make to students every day. Furthermore, we are gratified with the clear and equitable salary schedules for our staff. These strategic enhancements are designed to provide greater financial security and predictability while acknowledging the expertise and dedication of our entire workforce, thereby cultivating a truly stable and highly motivated team. The positive outcomes extend to our general leave provisions, this one I'm particularly excited about for our staff, with the introduction of a beneficial pilot program for the 25-26 school year. We're particularly excited to offer employees the opportunity to convert up to two sick leave days into personal days. This initiative provides enhanced flexibility, empowering our employees to more effectively manage their work-life balance and to address their personal needs. This program unequivocally demonstrates our commitment to employee well-being. Furthermore, in a significant stride toward heightened transparency in employee rights, disciplinary actions will also now include informing employees about the basis of any investigations being conducted. All of these comprehensive improvements stand as a testament to the productive and collaborative spirit that defined our negotiations, paving the way for a brighter and more rewarding future for all staff members and our exceptional staff. In closing, the union believes that these newly negotiated provisions represent a significant step forward for our district, directly benefiting our dedicated staff and, by extension, the students they serve. The collaboration and productive dialogue between the district and the union have resulted in a forward-thinking agreement that addresses financial well-being, enhances work-life balance, and reinforces transparency. We are confident that these positive changes will further strengthen our workforce, foster a more supportive environment, and contribute to the continued excellence of Real Rancho Public Schools. And I also want to thank the district for always being such a great partner.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Gary. Did that help, that statement to understand everything?
It really, it really did, and I want to thank, with this day and age, to hear the word great collaboration is really wonderful. And just a thank you to just all our staff, you know, all our staff. And it's just going to, like I just said, foster a really strong workforce in the future. So thank you. It really did.
I just want to say thanks for the work and thanks for the collaboration. Appreciate that.
Beth, anything?
Just add my appreciation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Cleveland?
I said it a little bit earlier, but thank you for your hard work. And it is wonderful to have a contract going into the school year. It's all final and ready to go. So we thank everybody that was part of that effort, and we're glad to have a contract. And we think it's a very good contract. So thank you both.
Thank you. Anything else, Mike, on your side?
No.
I'm good. Okay. We'll go for a motion.
Board member Jeff Morgan, I make a motion to approve, for the approval of the ratified negotiated union agreement.
Gary Tripp, I'll second.
We have a motion by Jeff Morgan and a second by Gary Tripp. All in favor on this?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last piece of business would...
I have it up here.
Yeah.
So we're going to have Ms. Healan and President Galbraith, President Healan and President Galbraith sign.
I start to find the right one.
Too many papers.
Too many papers. Nope, it's not that. Sorry, I've got a lot of paperwork today. So this is all... No, this is all bonds. This is the land. I don't, oh, wait. There it is. It was stuck behind. It was stuck behind. So I will go, it's just me, that needs to send.
You're a softball, too.
I am.
Ah, here we go.
Lefties are always right.
We're the best.
There you go, beatos.
You know, it just has to happen, okay? We had a rough life.
It is definitely a righty world.
It is.
It's a lefty president world there.
Okay, here is this. I don't know if you want to sign up here or you want to just.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, Jacy, I just got stuck behind.
Static.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Okay, next is to consider the award of RFP number 2025-021-FAC, General Contract on Demand. Michael Madrid, our Director of Purchasing and Chief Procurement Officer, will present.
For President Galbraith, Superintendent Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. As indicated, this procurement is to establish various price agreements for general contracting services on demand. This is a multiple award. As Dr. Cleveland mentioned earlier, there's a total of 19 recommended contracting firms. The firms are 724 Builders LLC, BND Industries, Belfour USA Group Incorporated, Brycon Corporation, Consolidated Builders of New Mexico, EPX Construction Partners, Equal Construction LLC, ESA Construction, Facility Build, Franken Construction Company, HEI Incorporated, JB Henderson, LLR Construction, Puma LLC, Rio Conchos Corporation, Reymark Construction Incorporated, SDV Construction, Wile Construction Incorporated, and Wiser Electric. What we're attempting to do is establish a pool of contractor, qualified contractors that have experience working K-12 and compete them against each other. When we did this solicitation, we did not have a scope of work, so it's difficult to get an idea of what their methodology on that particular project is going to be. So by establishing a pool of qualified contractors, we'll initiate what's called an RFQ, which is a quest for quotation. We'll pick anywhere from three to five contractors to compete against each other. The only matrix that we have as far as pricing is labor. So with the second step of it, we can bring in the material component and those other issues and the methodology, the health and safety, so we can vet them against each other. The other challenge that we have in construction is Rio Rancho, even though we're a major player, we're not the major player. And there's other entities soliciting the services of these qualified contractors. The contractors that are being recommended, I'm gonna say at least half of them have performed this type of activity with us in the past. We're very experienced, they're experienced with us. They understand our standards, our work order systems, how we generate the different tasks that facilities initiates. The other thing that we're able to do is we're going to cap each project, each individual project at a million dollars. Any project that exceeds a million dollars will solicit that on its own merit, and that'll be its own solicitation. So there's a cap on what facilities can use and what the district can use as far as an individual project. What else can I tell you? The services that they'll perform are maintenance, it's going to be repairs, it's going to be construction, renovations, and emergency repairs. All these firms, like I said, have significant experience working K-12, working with the district. And without a stand for questions.
Dr. Cleveland, do you want to add anything?
I just wanted to emphasize, I think having the pool is such a great idea because you, we have, as we know, we have shortages in all of these areas right now. And if one's busy, you don't want to be sitting around waiting for that person to get freed up. And so you go on to another, another vendor. And so I think having a good number of folks to choose from, not knowing who's going to be busy when, and not knowing what kind of projects may come up just totally unannounced. We've got a good group of folks to go to. So I appreciate all the hard work the evaluation committee put in to identifying 19 really good vendors that we can use as we need them.
Thank you. Beth, do you have any questions? Gary?
I have one question. Mike, you mentioned at the beginning there that, that you would send out through to five quotes. But if they're all approved and they wanted to give a quote, I mean, is there, since they're approved, how do you determine who's going to get a quote?
That's a good question. So what's going to happen is, as we get comfort level with the firms, we're going to get an idea of what their capacity is. So if we have a specific scope and we know that maybe 10 of the 19 are really strong in that capacity, we can rotate them around that particular quote. Some of the vendors that are identified, some of them are very.
Different areas.
Efficient, yeah, as far as even the security stuff, the, the things for sale in his group. So that's a little bit different feel than some of the others. So they do have their specialties.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for asking that question. It's actually similar to what, something I had. Jeff, any questions? Okay, we can go for a motion with 19 names to name out.
My cut man or? First member Jeff Morgan, I make a motion for the award of RFP number 2025-021-FAC, General Contracts to be awarded to 724 Builders LLC, BND Industries, Belfour USA Group Incorporated, Brycon Corporation, Consolidated Builders of New Mexico, EPS Construction Partners, Equal Construction LLC, ESA Construction, Facility Build, Franken Construction Company, HEI Incorporated, JB Henderson, LLR Construction, Puma LLC, Rio Conchos Corporation, Reymark Construction Incorporated, SDV Construction, Wile Construction Incorporated, Wiser Electric.
Can we have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second, Gary Tripp.
Okay, thank you. So a motion and a second. And all in favor on this?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Well done, Jeff. All right, our last item for the evening is to consider the approval of a real estate transaction for Vista Grande Elementary Property and Delegation to Close. Lauren Hatch, our chief legal counsel, and Patrick Martinez, our executive director of facilities, will present.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Cleveland, I apologize to you that you have given me so many time. Typically, this would be something that would be addressed by Mike Baker. Since he's not in town, I think, I think Patrick and I can cover it. You've had the opportunity to learn about this transaction a little bit over the years as we've been discussing it and negotiating it with the, with the purchaser. We do have on the board up here rendering of basically what the piece of property we're talking about. It's on the northern boundary of Vista Grande Elementary School. It's about six and a half acres, somewhere between 6.66 and 6.8, I think. Once we, once we have the property replatted, we'll know exactly what the acreage is. This is surplus property. It's not needed for anything that the district's doing. Westway Homes is a local developer, home builder, and their plan is to build some homes on that site. Actually, I think he had bigger thoughts. We had it appraised. The price is $2.76 a square foot. And, you know, based on our rough estimate, we're thinking it's about $800,000. But it will be, it will be broken down by the foot, once we know the exact square foot of each piece. Before we can complete this transaction, if the board approves it, we will have to seek approval from the State Board of Finance. We will have to replat the land so that we subdivide all that piece. And then, and then close the transaction. So I stand for any questions? And, well, maybe we should say, the reason the district is doing this is because it is surplus land. But the hope is that it will generate, generate some funds that will help us improve the Vista Grande property. And the idea is to do a bus loop.
That'd be nice.
You want to add the pickup drop?
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, the goal is to really to work on the circulation, overall site circulation for the, for the facility. Right now, it's, it's very condensed, as you can see, even in this aerial, the buses, pickup, drop-off, parent, you know, parents who walk up and get their children, it's all kind of condensed. And so the goal with this is to provide an additional parent drop-off on the west and going north on the site, utilize some of that property that's underutilized now, and, and really just make it safer. That, that's the goal. We've met with the city and come up with a plan so that they're on board. But yes, this, you know, this property sale would really help us push that forward to relieve some of those really dense areas of the site.
Yeah, okay. No, thank you. And this school, this is one of our very populated elementary schools, so that would be great. Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything?
Well, just, again, this is surplus land. We don't see that we would ever have a use for the land, given where it is, given the topography. It's just land that is, is there. And, and I appreciate Patrick's emphasis on the fact that we would be used to improve the existing school site. I'm sure some of you have been out there at drop-off and pickup times. It's, it's one of the least efficient that we have in the district. And they, they really struggle with that, especially given the size of that school. So I think overall, it's just a win-win for everyone. I appreciate the, the work that's gone into this. It's been, we're working on this for a long time. And it's good to get, get, get it to the board at this point. So I'm very much supportive of this particular proposal.
Thank you. Beth, did you have any questions? Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll go for a motion.
First member Jeff Morgan, I make a motion for the approval of a real estate transaction for a Vista Grande Elementary Property and Delegation to Close.
Gary Tripp second.
We have a motion by Jeff Morgan, a second by Gary Tripp, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, thank you. It's only 6:30, so we're going to take another 30 minutes. Just kidding. You guys could have seen some of the faces that I. Thank you, everyone. So coming up, we have, of course, July 4th, and the district office will be closed. The leadership retreat is the 10th and the 12th, and I think Jacy's been able to touch base with everyone on that. And then our next meeting will be July 14th. I will not be able to be at that meeting. I'll be traveling for work that day. And then we have the 28th will be an audit meeting and also another regular board meeting. So any questions on anything for advanced planning from anyone?
No.
Okay. All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.